Good evening. Council President DiMederos and Council Vice President John Edwards are both absent tonight, so I'll be filling in temporarily. What is the date today?
Fourteenth.
The fourteenth, the August fourteenth meeting of the town council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). (inaudible).
Madam Clerk.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Chavat.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor LeBeau.
Here.
Counselor DiMederos and Counselor Edwards are absent.
Approval of consent agenda. CA one, approval of regular session council minutes July 19, 2018. Approval of regular session council minutes of July 23, 2018. Approval of special council meeting minutes July 26, 2018. Number two, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Charter Review Commission Two, Cemetery Commission, Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, Board of Canvassers Five. CA three, correspondence, receive and file invitation to open house at Amicable Congregational Church on Saturday, September 8, 4:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Notice from Rideham Office of Water Resources regarding maintenance work being done on Naniqua Pond Bridge, number 028401. Number four, approval of tax assessors abatements. Number five, approval of petition by National Grid Verizon, New England for one new joint poll, P-14, on Hayden Avenue, including the response from Richard Rogers, DPW Director, and copy of the town stipulations required for approval. Number six, William D. Compton Planning Administrative Officer Report. Number seven, the Town Administrator Police Inspire Overtime Reports for June. Number eight, Town Administrator July Monthly Department Reports. Would any councilors like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
I'm present. I'm present. Number five A, please.
And that is the same one I wanted to draw your attention to. That is required for the approval, and it was Mr. Rogers' first day on the job, so we had to put it on the agenda, but he has some comments to make verbally.
Okay. Madam President. If nobody else is doing, if nobody else is pulling anything?
I have, actually, I'd like to take CA six, too.
See, okay, I was going for that one, too.
Mr. Rogers.
Good evening. The whole relocation is shown on the Narragansett Electric Company and Verizon sketch for Harborview Drive. The third way for Harborview Drive is not laid out yet in the field, however. The proposed whole relocation is shown on the sketch. From approximately 20 feet to the west is acceptable on a division that is located two foot minimum from the existing and new asphalt pavement, Hayden Edge.
So I'll ask the town solicitor, since this is under the consent agenda, how do we address Mr. Rogers' concern?
So I think if you just vote on it as a separate item now, it's been taken off the consent agenda, you could just incorporate his recommendation into your role as a condition and just move forward from there.
Do I need any more?
I'll make that motion to incorporate DPW Director's notes.
Second, but I do have a question also. So do you put this in writing somewhere? Is that, we're going to see something in writing afterwards?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I'll put it right on the approval form.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get with Richard tomorrow and, um...
Okay. No, just for record, that's all, just so that we know that you've got, we've got the notes in there somewhere. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan, you had CA six?
Yeah, CA six, I think, on the notes for, I don't know, is Mr. Compton here? So on page three, I just said some questions on the miscellaneous for the comprehensive plan. So, you can sit. You can stand if you want, either way.
We need a mic.
Yes.
Okay, so I just found, I realized that this is a statewide planning that has come back, and I just wanted to know, it's, there's not much to it, so I just wanted to know if you could talk a little bit about what needs to be done and what it looked like, and just let us know.
Sure. There were, I don't have a copy of my report and the letter in front of me, so I'm having to speak extemporaneously, but there were some minor things that were in the, there were items that were required by statewide planning, and then there were some other items that were suggested by statewide planning. I've spoken with the town administrator, and I've also spoken with our consultant, and we're in the process of working together to get those addressed. These were not items that were unusual type comments to get back from a statewide planning agency.
Okay. I guess I'm thinking, I'm just, I just wanted to know what kind of, because there was so much work done on the complaint for the past couple of years, I thought it was finally...
Right.
I know they're not going to, their job is to find things wrong, but I wasn't expecting, like, tons of praise, but I just wanted to know, it's like, is there anything substantive?
I don't think there was anything substantive. One of the items, as I recall, was mapping recreation areas. Again, I'd be happy to research it and respond more intelligently to you sometime tomorrow.
Oh, as long as you respond, I mean, are we going to see it again? Actually, do we have to see it again before it gets approved?
So as soon as you approve it, it's effective as far as state land use?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, local land use controls?
Yeah.
The approval from the state is just required to make it binding on the state. Depending on what type of changes are being made, you may need just a perfunctory vote to ratify the changes from statewide planning into the final document, but that depends on what statewide planning comes back with.
And do we need another open meeting for this, another open hearing?
No, you've already had the public hearing, so that part is done.
Okay, so that would suggest that it's not substantive, is that correct?
I haven't looked at the comments myself, but at least that's what I'm hearing from the administrative officer and the planning consultant.
Yeah, go ahead, no.
I actually, the reason I took this off the consent agenda is that I have a concern about, this might be our, it's at least our third, if not our fourth, trip to the state, and I realize that Jan was not here when we were developing the comprehensive plan, nor was Mr. Compton. And there is a history behind this in that when we started this, we were given, because the state was in the process of changing their spec for statewide plans, we were given a document of interim guidance that this is what we were to do. We did that. They came back and said, "We want, we want." We had a meeting with them, and we said, "Wait a second, we spent the money, we did what you said." And they said, "Well, okay, you know, can you change?" And we did. And then we hired a consultant for a third pass at this. And I am a little fearful that as planners change up there, and this document keeps going up there, so from my perspective, before we do anything or spend any more money or any more time on this, I think it might be useful for the town administrator and the planner to understand the history of how many times we have met with the state on this, and they've said, "If you do just this, that's all we want." This is number four, and it's getting a little worrisome.
If I'm right, in my experience, it's not entirely unusual for statewide planning to do things this way. It's a pretty burdensome process, and it drives a lot of people crazy. On the other hand, I took a good look, because I had the same concerns, what is this, and why do we have to do more, and we better make sure that it is, it makes sense. I think the ones that actually were somewhat substantial made sense, that we were a little light on some of these things. I forget exactly what it was. One was recreation, I think another one may have had to do with housing, and I think part of it is, in fact, the result of the process taking so long, that, you know, three years down the line, there are new circumstances that if we have a chance to put it in, it's actually an hour in the town's interest to update it a little bit. So I discussed it with the planner and say, "Let's do this," and I can help with some of the rewrite of some of the issues. Was climate change part of that, too?
It may have been in some of the suggested items, I don't recall specifically.
Yeah, I have a fair amount of background, so that I can work with the planner to write the update instead of us having to go to the consultant. The only thing that the consultant may have to do is update one or two of the GIS maps. And again, it actually would be helpful to the town to have the update.
I think, you know, for me personally, going back and paying the consultant again, if we don't have to, before this goes forward, this is just me, I'd actually like to see a list of what exactly the state wants, because at some point, you know, we are entitled to draw the line and say, "This is your fourth pass at it, and each time you tell us, if we just change this, it will be fine." So I'm not comfortable committing more resources to this, if maybe it could be on the agenda and the council could see exactly what statewide planning is asking for.
What we should do is just send the letter to you, so you can review it with a summary of what we think might be the best way to respond to it, and then you can take it from there. I do think it makes sense for you to see the proposed changes. You will see, and the ones that are considered to be not mandatory and sort of for, you know, whatever, readability, there are some that I kind of go like, "This is not worth it," in my, to speak frankly.
It's not worth...
But again, it's sort of par for the course, the process is known for that, unfortunately.
It's not worth what? It's not worth to change, or it's not worth to say anything about it?
I'm not sure if in a public forum I want to go any further than what I just said.
Okay.
I think statewide planning has a lot of resources and a lot of planners, and sometimes can come up with lots of things for municipalities to do. Okay, so are we good on CA six here? Okay. In that case, if no one else has anything else, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right. Next. Open public forum announcements, comments, and questions. I only have one. Sustainable Secconnet, William Gerlach, and Shelley Costa in Clean Ocean Access. Welcome.
(inaudible).
All right. Thank you to the council for having us back here. Just a quick note by way of introduction, again, my name is Will Gerlach, this is Shelley Costa, we co-facilitate the local Tiverton-based environmental advocacy group known as Sustainable Secconnet. Dave McLaughlin, who was here when we were back here in December, who's the executive director from Clean Ocean Access, is unable to join us this evening because he's not feeling well. So all of this material was in your docket, so this is really just for the folks who are in the room here. So our agenda this evening is quick and to the point, it's a quick refresher on the discussion we had back in December of '17. Want to take some time to update the council on the policy front, as what's happening both locally, regionally, nationally, and internationally. Talk about the support that we have garnered for enacting a ban on single-use plastic carryout bags, and then make our request to draft a new ordinance in advance of public hearing and vote, so. Really quickly, just to recap our December '17 discussion here, we introduced this topic and really talked about the single-use plastic carryout bag crisis in terms of the overall plastic pollution crisis that's happening locally, nationally, and frankly, globally, and really its impact on public health as well as the environment. We have included, again, some key statistics in the appendix of this presentation. We highlighted the role that municipalities have played in leading the advance of single-use plastic carryout bag bans. Frankly, this trend continues strongly, and we'll talk about that. We showcased the list at that point in time of local organization boards and commissions that were supporting our campaign, and again, we've listed that out in the appendix. We presented draft ordinance language for consideration, and then through our discussion, we took back the request from the council that Sustainable Secconnet go out and demonstrate greater public support for a ban on single-use plastic carryout bags, and that is what we intend to demonstrate this evening. So in terms of policy updates, we'll start at the local and regional level. Since December of 2017, four additional communities in Rhode Island have enacted bans, those being Portsmouth, Bristol, North Kingstown, and South Kingstown, bringing the total to nine. So when you add in Barrington, Jamestown, Newport, Middletown, and Block Island, you get nine. We very much would like Tiverton to be the 10th on this list. In Massachusetts, we've seen even greater adoption of bans. 14 additional communities have enacted bans, bringing the total to 81. This again includes Boston, which is a major retail hub, obviously. Regionally throughout New England, the greater New England area, we see four communities in Connecticut with legislation, 14 communities in Maine, including Freeport, and call out Freeport again because of its retail base, one community in New Hampshire, and 26 communities in New York State. Pulling the lens out a little bit wider, we have California and Hawaii that have entire statewide bans on single-use plastic carryout bags, so. And then globally, there continues to be a growing list of countries who are taking a leadership position in enacting bans on plastic bags or other single-use plastics, or have documented their plans to do so. So you can see that list right there, no need to go through that. So just to refresh everyone about what our campaign and what we would like to see a single-use plastic carryout bag ban ordinance here in Tiverton cover, this is very much in line with what other communities, both in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and across the board, have really taken into consideration. So what the ordinance would cover is, again, single-use plastic carryout bags. To put it another way, these are the bags you get at a point of sale, like at a grocery store or a pharmacy, typical bags that we're all very much used to. The ordinance would also require businesses to provide for plastic bag recycling, if they're not already doing so, to make reusable bags available for sale if they're not doing it, and then penalties for noncompliance. What would be exempt from the proposed ordinance, and this is really important because we fielded a lot of questions about this, it would not cover town trash bags. We need to be very clear, we've fielded a lot of questions, thinking that we're trying to get rid of town trash bags, that is not the case. It would also exempt plastic, what are called barrier bags. So these are typically the bags that you'll get at a grocery store for wrapping your meat or produce, or perhaps what you get your daily newspaper in. Double-opening bags are the ones that you get at a dry cleaner. Also exempt would be bags measuring larger than 28 inches by 36 inches, and that is largely because typically reusable bags don't come in that size. And then plastic bags that are greater than 4 millimeters in thickness would also be exempt because they are considered reusable because of their strength. And again, draw your attention to the draft ordinance language that we have provided as part of the docket. So when we were here in December, the council asked us to go out and demonstrate public support for this. So Sustainable Secconnet went out and either participated in or hosted a number of events. Since that point in time, whether they be various beach cleanups or participating in other existing forums within the town, we were able to collect 216 signatures from Tiverton residents who support the passing of a single-use plastic carryout bag ban ordinance. Since that point in time, and we were unable to submit it as part of our docket, but I would like to hand it off to the town clerk now, is a list of local businesses here in Tiverton who have, who we have talked to and who have expressed support for a single-use plastic carryout bag ban, and I'll just give a second for this to make its way around. I think we'll have enough copies here. Do we have enough? So as that makes its way around, so the list so far, we are talking to more, Coastal Roasters, The Provender, Secconnet Farm, the entire Four Corners Merchants Association, The Meeting House, Tiffany Pay Jewelry, as well as Wilkie Feed, have all signed on in supporting this bag ban ordinance. I would call out just Wilkie Feed momentarily here. Mrs. Wilkie is a strong supporter of this, and if you ever talk to her, she'll tell you that she went plastic-free a number of years ago and is a staunch advocate for this move. So the request of the council at this point is quite simple. We would ask that the council direct the town solicitor tonight to draft an ordinance with a recommended effective date. Again, we have draft language in the packet materials. Then schedule and hold a public hearing to ensure all stakeholders have the opportunity to voice their opinion, and then move to vote and pass an ordinance prior to the November election. And then if the ordinance were to pass, we would ask the council to help perform community-wide education and assistance during voluntary compliance period, that being the period between the ordinance passing and prior to the effective date. I will reiterate that as an organization, Sustainable Secconnet remains committed to assisting in that education process, as well as helping to collect and distribute reusable bags as necessary, and, you know, potentially, and this is something that we talked to the Four Corners Merchants Association about, and they were very enthusiastic, is using the opportunity to do a, or create a local, shop-local campaign and brand reusable bags and try to, you know, drive some additional business here in town. So with that, we'll pause and see if there are any questions from the council. Anything?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have a question. Excuse me. I have a question. I was just curious, because you're just starting this up, so do the other towns have penalties as well? And because I think you put down in the ordinance you were requesting a penalty, and do the other towns have a penalty? Because I think everybody seems to be in a state of moving this forward.
Yeah.
Which I think is good. The only thing that concerned me was the penalty.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, happy to go out and secure the ordinance language, or perhaps the solicitor could do so as well. I think it's up to the community as to whether or not a penalty would be set, and if it were set, how much. I think you're seeing communities take pretty much a central approach with some, you know, slight modifications on whether, you know, to charge for certain bags or to, you know, not offer plastic bags altogether, but the penalty, I'm not too sure as to the amount that other towns are levying.
Because I know, at least it's my understanding, for the state, when we're doing recycling and we get, towns get money back, Tiverton has gotten money back, and it's gotten more money than other towns, and that's like a positive reinforcement.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I was going for, more positive reinforcement.
Sure.
Especially at the beginning. And I'm thinking since, which is, of these towns in Newport County, do you know which one started it? Was it Newport? Are they the oldest?
Yeah, so, yes, the ones that, and actually, I don't have it, it's not working. Let me just get back up. So Barrington, Jamestown, Newport, Middletown, Block Island, all in effect right now, Portsmouth in Bristol, I could double-check this, I believe it's 1119, along with North Kingstown and South Kingstown.
Okay. I actually thought Barrington was the first one.
Barrington was the first one.
Okay.
Back in, I believe it was 2014.
Yeah, that's okay. I was just wondering if they went right from, right from the get-go to do penalties, rather than say, "Let's see if we can," because everybody in these areas has got beautiful beaches, and it's just like, that's, you know, when you see the trash on the beaches, that's an easy, it's an easy way to, you know, pick up that trash. But anyhow, that's, you know, I'm not asking for that information right now.
Okay.
That was just, that was...
I was just trying to look it up and read it back.
Okay, yeah. I think that we can, we can work on that. Anyhow.
Comments? Questions?
I have a comment. Right now in Texas, in Laredo, Texas, on this Thursday, the Supreme Court is going to hear this ban bag, ban of single-use bags, and they don't know how it's going to go yet. I talked, I called the attorney today to get some information on the lawsuit, and it's going to reverse all the, anybody in Texas who had a ban on bags, they're looking to reverse it, because it's against the Constitution of the United States to tell somebody what they can use and what they can't.
So actually, that decision did come down from the Texas Supreme Court. It wasn't based on the U.S. Constitution, but it was based on Texas state statute, basically said that municipal ordinances were preempted by the state statute that said Texas municipalities couldn't pass ordinances on that issue, so.
And is that the information that I spoke with Tony about today, is that what you're bringing back to me now?
Yep.
And so with that note, I don't think now is the time for Tiverton to get involved with banning bags, so amongst a bunch of other reasons that I have personally, but to protect the town and any lawsuits coming in the future, I don't agree with banning the bag. Everything, everything that goes in them bags is plastic. Your cupcakes, your ring things, your Twinkies, everything in there is wrapped in plastic, and we're putting them in the plastic bag, so you're taking, you know, it just seems like, like I spoke to...
You did speak to me, and the point that I bring up is just because...
I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
My name's Shelley.
Shelley.
Just because there's more plastic problems that we don't have the solutions for right now, doesn't mean that we just don't come up with solutions. I mean, we have to start where we can and then build off of all those spots and keep improving and doing the best that we can. And as far as a law in Texas, I mean, it's a different state, they've got different state laws, and Rhode Island doesn't have those state laws, so I don't think that that would cause problems for the bans here.
We don't know that yet. Nobody's challenged yet, so.
Well, with all due respect, Counselor LeBeau, a couple of things to respond. I concur with Shelley here on the fact that just because, you know, we shouldn't not do anything, there's a viable alternative in the form of reusable bags or paper bags to tackle this problem. We have to start somewhere. The other point is that there's a clear trend throughout the country that municipalities are leading the way. Third is that the state has introduced legislation in both the House and the Senate to review a statewide ban. That hasn't progressed yet, but I would imagine that if something were to go against state law or a state statute, that those bills wouldn't have even been introduced. So I think the risk of a lawsuit coming down in the state of Rhode Island or in Tiverton over a plastic bag ban, I just, I think that risk is low.
Well, maybe so, but, you know, you guys know where I stand on it.
And I do think that we're seeing a growing list of businesses in town who...
Well, with all due respect, Counselor Lebo, um, a couple of things to respond. Uh, I concur with, with Shelley here on the fact that just because, you know, we, we shouldn't not do anything, there's a viable alternative in the form of reusable bags or paper bags to tackle this problem. We have to start somewhere. The other point is that there's a clear trend throughout the country that municipalities are leading the way. Third is that the state has, uh, introduced legislation in both the House and the Senate to review a statewide ban. That hasn't progressed yet, but I would imagine that if something were to go against state law, uh, or a state statute, that those bills wouldn't have even been introduced. So I think the risk of a lawsuit coming down in the state of Rhode Island, um, or in Tiverton over a plastic bag ban, um, I just, I think that risk is low.
Well, maybe so, but, you know, you guys know where I stand on it.
And, and I do think that we're seeing a growing list of businesses in town who are showing support and recognize the, you know, this isn't just a feel-good sort of option. There's clear scientific data and evidence that the introduction of plastics, especially microplastics, into the food chain can cause harm in terms of public health. This is part of the problem. This is not a silver bullet. I'm not going to, you know, try to blow that smoke. But, uh, if we, you know, a journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step, and we think that this is a really solid single step, and frankly, an opportunity for the town of Tiverton to take a leadership role in the state and the region, uh, to demonstrate support for improving public health and countering, uh, what is really a global plastic pollution issue.
Uh, I understand all that. So today, while I was on a little downtime, I did some more research. Back in, uh, in the sixties, when all this started, the big ban was on paper, let's save the trees. And that's how plastic bags came about. So now we're back on the other side of the fence now, what they, everybody switched over to plastic. In 1985, eighty percent of the country went to plastic because they were saving the trees. Now we're going to go back.
Well, yeah, so.
To let yous.
Yeah, so first of all, trees are a renewable resource. Um, second, I do imagine that the plastic lobby had a fair amount to do with that. We could debate that.
All right. Well, no matter what, let's not go any further because my, you know, you guys know where I stand.
Sure.
But I do commend you for doing your part.
Uh, Madam President, just a couple of questions. I see the list of businesses that you visited, uh, to get their feedback. Did you go to like the major, uh, businesses in town, like?
The national retail.
Right Aid, Tom's Market, Dollar General.
Yeah.
They have, their, their usage is pretty high.
Yeah. So, um, Counselor Shabbat, we have not. However, I would, um, point to the fact that national chains or even regional chains such as Right Aid, CVS, um, Dunkin' Donuts, those sort of things, have footprints in other communities, both in Rhode Island and especially Massachusetts. I've done the analysis, uh, where bag bans have been put in place. So from an infrastructure perspective, from a corporate supply chain perspective, it would be anticipated that, um, you know, such a ban would not necessarily, um, negatively impact a national chain, um, to the degree that, you know, we think it might.
And Tom's Market, they're a local.
I did talk to Tom's Market, actually, and I, you know, a lot of businesses shared some concerns, and I don't want to, um, identify which mark, which place shared which concern because that wasn't something that I had asked them that I could share with other people. But I can share some of the concerns with you without identifying which places they were. But I can let you know that I did talk to people at Tom's Market. I mean, I talked to Secconnet Outfitters, I talked to, um, a lot of places. Some of the things they said, um, some of the bigger places said that they knew it was coming and that they'd adjust when it happened. Um, somebody suggested trying compostable bags and seeing if that would work for their business. Um, you know, they were wondering if other things were coming down the line as far as other plastics, and, I mean, these are, uh, great conversation starters. Um, I don't, you're not going to go through bans for every single thing, but maybe even just starting the conversation gets businesses thinking about different ways that they can do things and trying out new things just by kind of bringing up the conversation, which I think was great. And I got some great feedback. Um, no one was, you know, really harsh. It was great conversations to have. They were all very nice, um, and some wanted to know more. And a lot of, unfortunately, it's a busy season right now, and a lot of the businesses, it's been very hard. I'll leave messages and call two or three times, and I haven't really connected with them all yet. Um, so it's something we continue to do in the future.
And just one other note, Warren is in the same place that Tiverton's at, um, in terms of entertaining a possible ban. So knowing that Tom's, um, you know, has their shop back in Warren, I'm sure it's on their radar as well. And the only, my last point on that would be, you know, we would welcome the opportunity during a public hearing for, you know, all key stakeholders to have a voice at the table to, um, share their concerns or their support.
So let me just continue on here. The next, um, thing I'd like to ask is, what is the cost differential between a single-use bag and one of the ones that are allowable, the sustainable bag or reusable bag?
Um, I just bought, uh, so if you go to Clements or Lee's, uh, I just bought a couple of bags. I think they were, you know, ninety-nine cents each.
No, I mean, the, the actual, you said the heavier mill bags.
Oh, the four-millimeter plastic bag?
Correct.
I don't know, Counselor Lebo, you actually use those, right?
I did. It's, uh, six dollars per thousand. It's twenty-four dollars per thousand for the, for, well, it's actually for the paper. From, from, single-use to paper, six dollars per thousand difference.
The difference.
The difference.
The difference. Per one thousand bags.
And that was today's research online today, to buy them online as, at a retail.
Retail, not wholesale.
I mean wholesale, as a wholesaler, that's what it would cost me, six bucks more. But again, like you said, I use the heavier bag most of the time when I can get, because we don't sell light stuff, and very few. Again, we don't use very many. But it's, so.
So is that, that going from the light, lighter bag to the heavier bag?
A lighter bag, the, from, the single-use to paper is six dollars per thousand.
Yeah, but what?
Per one thousand. Per one thousand bags. So about twenty percent.
That's going to paper.
It's going to a pa, a bag that's going to biodegradable paper bag, right? I don't know about going to the heavier plastic ones. It's roughly the same.
Okay. So there is a twenty percent increase in the cost?
In the cost of bags.
My only concern is, um, this ban is basically on our businesses in town. And we've already gone through an ordinance and it, we have, actually haven't passed it, but on outdoor seating, where we were trying to streamline that process and, um, didn't get the businesses involved up front. So I hate to be embarrassed again to have a public meeting and then have businesses come in and, um, voice their opposition to this. Certainly, uh, you're making, we're making assumptions because this is also, um, our food services, uh, where they, um, for takeout, uh, they have, uh, bags as well. So it, it hits a large, um, it hits, hits all of our businesses in town, basically. Um, so I'm a little leery of hitting them, uh, without their feedback.
So I think that's fair. Um, my, my question would be, I mean, we as a volunteer organization can attempt to try and solicit input and feedback, or we could draft an ordinance and hold a formal public hearing, which will get the same sort of results, whether it's us. Frankly, I think you get a better turnout and a better response with a formal public hearing sponsored by the town than a bunch of volunteers trying to track these guys down. That's my opinion. In any case, I do, the only other thing, I, I think we're not, we're very sensitive to that. I grew up working in my father's restaurant business. I'm very sensitive to a small business, uh, type of culture. The precedent is being set, though, and, uh, you know, there are far more, I would say, retail, um, outfits in other communities, um, that have enacted the ban. Um, I think there's a precedent being set, um, and I think it's one where, um, the, the alternative is not necessarily the end of the world. I mean, six dollars on a thousand bags is just over three cents a bag. Um, but I think consumers, and clearly demonstrated by the 216 citizen signatures that we got, which for the time being is four times the amount of signatures required to put an alternative budget on the docket, um, you know? I think, because I don't want to lose sight of the consumer in the citizen input here, um, amidst all of the discussion about the businesses, so.
And to respond to that, 216 signatures mean 216 people can act right now and not get, when they go into a business, they can refuse to take a plastic bag.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a direct impact. So they can do that now. They don't need an ordinance to do that. They can do that today. But what you're saying is, you're putting a restriction on the market. So you're putting a restriction on businesses, and they didn't have a say, and at this point they, you get enough people to say, oh, I don't want you to do that. It impacts their business, so they're going to have a twenty percent increase in costs for their bags. That is going to be translated into dollars back to the consumer, whereas the consumer goes in, and I've had people come to me and say, don't get rid of the sing, single-use bags. I use them. I need them. So I have the flip side. There are some people who want them still and use them. So I've, I've heard both stories, and I've heard, uh, businesses' response to this. And so I'm just concerned that we're, again, implementing a, basically, another impact on a business that will cost them money, and then in turn, it will cost the consumer money as well. Whereas if you don't want to participate in it, those 216 people can go in and bring in their reusable bags and use them every time they go into the store and have an impact. That's, that's all I'm saying.
So, uh, Bill, I have to say that, um, as, you know, someone who comes from the Conservation Commission, um, I wouldn't mind seeing all these plastic bags go away because it's, if you clean up the beaches around here, it's just an absolute mess. But of, um, the list that you've given us here of the organizational support, I noticed that there are two Tiverton organizations, the Open Space Commission and the Harbor Commission, which I think is great. There's one more organization that I would really like to see on that list, and that is the Economic Development Commission. Um, you know, generally, I think that of the carrot or stick approach, that I always liked the carrot approach better, um, and, you know, sort of just passing an ordinance is a bit of the stick approach. But I think that if we were, if you were to work with the Economic Development Commission and get the businesses in, and potentially there are things that we could do, you know, that wouldn't cost a lot to incent the businesses, whether that's recognizing businesses that want to participate in this, some sort of shop local, shop sustainable campaign, something on the Facebook, maybe we can find some grant money, or we could find some funds to actually buy some number of the, um, you know, the recyclable bags, um, and put, you know, the businesses' names on them so that they get some advertising. I mean, I think that there's an, an in-between way here to give the businesses the opportunity to participate. And frankly, I think a lot of the local small businesses, many of them are owned by Tiverton residents, they don't like the, you know, they don't like the garbage bags everywhere either. So, you know, my suggestion would be, for, for your next step, would be to go work with the Economic Development Commission and see if together you can't come up with an outreach program or some ideas as to, you know, bring the businesses in through the Economic Development Corporation, um, Commission here, which has the, you know, that's part of their charter. Um, see if you can come up with some plans. See if we can help find some funding, whether it's grant money or something we have here, or maybe we even have something in our recycling account that we could actually use, um, to help, you know, lessen the burden on businesses and, and offer the businesses some kind of incentive to join in on this. That would be my suggested next step of, of where to go with this, and I think EDC would probably, you know, receive you well.
So, okay, one more minute. Uh, what I would do, um, like I said, I commend you guys, I'm trying to say, I'm trying to do this. I would put a recycle bin at my shop for all plastic. They can come in, recycle the plastic. Once, give them a ticket. Once a month, I'll do a draw and you give somebody a one-hour gun training seminar. They bring their, they bring their plastic bags to me. Everybody gets a ticket. It's going to cost me more money than it, than it is to get rid of these bags, but it helps the environment at the same time, helps the businesses, and somebody can get something once a month for, uh, use them, some kind of incentive to bring their recycled bags to the shop, throw them in, helps the businesses and, uh, something like that. Just, just, I just don't, I'm not an ordinance ban type of guy. But I would do my part in doing that, putting a recycle bin at my shop inside and where I open all the time. And again, give something once a month, I'll give a lot, a ticket, we'll draw once a month, and somebody can come in and have a, you know, that'll keep them off the beaches and they'll get some experience in a gun range if that's what they like.
So I think there were a lot of good comments. I, I think you're going in the right direction. I think, I think you just got to keep the momentum going. I do use, I do use paper bags to recycle, but I also bring my bags to the store, and I've seen a lot of people doing that, and I also say, I don't need a bag. So people are, people are aware, but I think I would, I, I wouldn't do the ordinance, make a motion tonight, just because I think it's more important that all of us are here to, to discuss it, because we're missing two people on the council, so I, you know, for that reason. But I think for other reasons, too. There's different suggestions that people have made. Other businesses might want to also have a, you know, I'll put a plastic bag in there. And I'll tell you, if you stop publicizing that, this, 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 and this organization or shop is putting in plastic bags, or they'll retake your, you know, that's positive for them as well. But I also would just suggest also, uh, back up what Joan said about, um, the businesses to really get the, not that the businesses are more equal than other people, but it is true that, you know, they, they really need to get, be on board, and you certainly have got some of them going. But you've also got one down at the end of this table who's also said he's interested, even though he might not agree on the ban, he's interested in helping out with the clean. So I, I would think, if you could do that, and, uh, I would go in incentives.
And at some point, and at some point, if, if it starts with an incentivized program, at some point then it might not be a big deal to have it be an ordinance, because at that point, people say, you know what, this works, the town's cleaner, there's less plastic bags, and, and, you know, the business community embraces it. So I, I'm not, in my opinion, it doesn't mean you'd never get, we'd never get to the point where we could say, that's it, no more plastic bags everywhere. But, um, and, and I'm, you know, if you haven't met with the chair of the EDC, and I know there is a member right here.
Actually, I, I have, so.
Okay.
And we're planning on going to there, so.
I think that that, that's an excellent place to start, and possibly the town administrator may have some ideas as to whether or not, um, we have any, you know, recycling money or opportunity. It's too bad we're not about a month early, because they think Rhode Island Resource Recovery just closed their grant period for stuff like this, but there's always next year. Um, I know that Barbara wanted to say something.
Barbara Pelletier at Bonnie Field Drive. You have some great ideas about the bags and the printed advertising and that, uh, Counselor Hilton. I was just wondering, do you have any ideas how many bags actually are given out by the major stores? I know you have the different, Tiverton Four Corners, you, uh, did some surveys, but I just wondered how many bags are actually, you know, filling, um...
Yeah, and, and we don't have that data. I mean, we haven't requested that data.
Right. Because I'm just wondering, um, uh, volume-wise, cubic feet-wise, how much plastic is that? Is it enough boxes to be the size of that table? Is it enough boxes of plastic bags? I'm, I'm just wondering about the volume of bags that are given out, and, and we don't get excited about other plastics in a sense, and maybe we should get excited about the food wrapped in plastic, which we know is not good. Even I put my stuff in glass containers in the fridge. So, uh, I, I just wondered if we can't really solve the problem without passing another law. But I do, I'm really curious how many thousands of plastic bags get dispensed in Tiverton per year. That, that, that might be an interesting.
Find out.
You, you know, the, the stores know how many they order.
Sure.
So just curious.
Good. Thank you.
Well, if it's okay with you, I would suggest, and we'd meet with them, and then at some point come back with the EDC, and we'll see where we are. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on, public hearings, advertised, public hearings, we have none. Town council sitting as a board of licensing, advertise. Matthew Foster, DBA Innovative Pools and Spas, Inc., 2095 Main Road, Tiverton, request holiday license renewal. Is Mr. Foster here?
It's just a...
Okay.
Okay.
In that case...
Madam Acton President, I will make a motion to approve his holiday license.
I have a motion in a second.
Second.
Discussion. Madam Clerk, is everything in order on this? It's just this one sheet. Yes. In that case, any discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor? No appointments or resignations, unfinished business or financial business, new business. Linda Larson, Tiverton Days, a post-report on Tiverton Days and a request approval for town-sponsored family movie night and pumpkin showcase.
So back in front of you again to report out like we did last year on the 2018 Tiverton Days event. All events were well-attended. We gave her all incident-free, thanks to our great townspeople and our police and fire departments and those that are here. We just, you know, wanna thank our planning committee, which two members are here, Barbara Pelletier and Kelly Levesque, and the others are watching from home. Without them, it wouldn't be possible, as well as our sponsors and those who have donated. And because of their generosity, we've been able to cover the costs of all, everything, all the costs of the three-day event. We received some great press coverage from Joe Good over at the Fall River Herald News and Julie Fertado over at Secan at Time. So if you had a chance to pick up the newspapers, we had some great photos in there. I did put a report together, like I did last year, which I will give to the town clerk for your review. Unfortunately, I didn't get it into your packets in time, so I know I can't distribute it here. If you have any questions or would like to go through anything, we are, I'd be more than happy to answer anything that you may have. We will be sending out thank yous to everyone. We had some cards put together with a saved date, so next year's event is July 26 through the 28th. And we certainly thank the town council for their support and allowing us this to be a town-sponsored event for our community.
What'd you say, July 26, next year?
July 26 through the 28th of 2019.
Can we try to get the high school next year to stop the little problem that we had at a restaurant, the parking?
We will certainly do our best.
And for the movie thing that you're doing now, let's try to get the high school plenty of parking over there.
So we have, we will talk about the movie next, but for this event, as well as prior years, we have submitted all of our paperwork to the school department for superintendent approval. We've had support from the town council, the fire department, the police department, so forth and so on, the athletic director, as well as the high school principal. It's been the superintendent's decision.
He's gone.
So we will try, we will try again. So we will continue. It is, the high school is a great location, parking is there, Ranger School is there. It's a neighborhood that's used to a little bit of activity with the high school festivities. So we will, we will continue to go back to the school.
You plan on doing the bonfire next year?
So everyone was in love with the fire pits, including Chief Lloyd. The fire pits were bought and donated to the town. The town does owe them, own them now for future events. Everyone loves a bonfire, though, so we will certainly come back and discuss that as a future time. But the fire pits were a great hit as well.
Who got them fire pits going, just for the record?
The fire pits, there was thirteen...
No, not donated. Who got them burning?
Oh, who got them burning? You know, the Tiverton Fire Department. We really have to give kudos to Chief Lloyd and, and his team, but they did have a helper in Councilor LeBeau.
It's 'cause he used to do it when he was a kid, that's why.
We had some green wood, and, but the, our Fire Department certainly took charge pretty quickly and was able to man those.
I'll never make it as an arson.
I'm not sure I wanna know how you got them started.
I didn't, I didn't.
No, there was a, there was a quick transition. CFD was certainly, was on the call there.
Linda, now you have a request for a town-sponsored movie night and pumpkin showcase on Sunday, October 7, from 6 to 10 p.m.
We do, we're coming back for town approval again, like we did last year. However, you know, Grinnell's Beach is still under construction, so we'd like to move that. We did not have a movie night this year with Tiverton Days. It was a lot jam-packed into a three-day, too many events in a way. So we wanted to take the movie night in combination with the pumpkin fest and put it up either at Picassett Fields, or we will go back to the Tiverton School Department for request of the use of the high school. So it's the exact same events, just combined. I have it as a request subject, too. It's my understanding, I believe the rec. commission, committee is meeting tonight, so we do have to go before them for approval of Picassett Fields. I do have all the paperwork filled out for the school department as well for submission, but I wanted to come before you first to, for approval.
Can you just clarify, in terms of town sponsorship?
Exactly what we did last October, that it would be a town-sponsored event. It would meet all the criteria as set forth by the solicitor. It's free, it's access to all, we don't make any money. It's a blow-up movie screen like we had last year on Picassett Field, showing a family film. We let the community decide. It might be something Transylvania-like, 'cause it is October. We don't use any candles in the pumpkins, we use glow sticks, so forth and so on. So it's the, it's the town sponsorship would being, it's a town-sponsored event, it's under the town insurance, the trust with the tulip program, like we did last year.
That's correct.
Linda, do you have a rain date in case?
So the rain date is built into the contract, so I don't have a contract signed with an outdoor, there's a couple of different outdoor movie companies that have blow-up screens, so you can coordinate that. We don't wanna go too far into the very chilly, you know, time of year. But the rain date, we would, and then come back for approval or amendment to whatever that date may be.
All right. There aren't any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Sure do. I'll make a motion. We grant Tiverton Days permission to hold the family night on Sunday, October 7, from 6 to 10. Location to be determined at a later date, either the high school or the Picassett Recreation Field.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just on behalf of everybody, I'm sure, thank you very much for your entire committee's hard work on Tiverton Days.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Linda, there's no meeting for the rec. committee tonight. They didn't have a quorum.
Okay. So we'll be able to get it in pretty quick. Thank you.
Next, the Open Space Commission, request to advertise for a public hearing on proposed revision to Town Code Chapter 54, Sections 54 through 26 and 54 through 35, recreation, open space in other town areas and buildings open to the public. Good evening, Mr. Plunkett.
Good evening, members of the council. This has been in progress for a long time. Glad to see that it's finally come to be reviewed and possibly taken care of. The memo that I wrote for this item is, pretty well summarizes all the changes that would be in the ordinance. We could go over those briefly, but basically, it includes, the new ordinance will include open space properties that weren't in the old ordinance, so that needs to be updated. It changes the management responsibility for the Fogland Beach Conservation Area from the Conservation Commission to the Open Space Commission. The Open Space Commission, that's their primary role, managing public preserved areas. And so it's kind of a natural shift. There was a, there was a committee formed many, many years ago between the Recreation Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Open Space Commission to manage that area down there. It's become difficult to get together, you know, one more committee and one more meeting and so on. So they requested this, that the Open Space Commission assumed that, and the Open Space Commission voted that we would be willing to do that. Third item is to delete a provision giving Recreation Commission authority over coastal rights away, which is not legal, because that belongs to the Harbor Commission. So that's basically just a correction. Reflect recent changes in the town regulations regarding dogs in public areas. As you recall, we passed a big ordinance on that, which was different than what we had in our ordinance, so that it makes that consistent with the town ordinance. Revise the process for request, requests for special use of public areas. The old process was kind of clumsy and unclear, so that was just clarified and, I think, improved. And since there was some overlapping coverage between this ordinance, which has existed for years, in an old section of the Town Code 50-1, we recommend deleting that Town Code part, because part of it is out of date, and the part that's not out of date, we've included it in this ordinance version. So I know it's a long list, but it's really pretty much administrative, administrative update, and it needs to be done. We have new properties that we need to officially be given authority to manage. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
I have a question for you on number six. You have no firearms. Metal detectors, I can see paintball guns, stuff like that, but the firearms, meaning hunting, like for guys walking around in there with hunting rifles and stuff, because people, a lot of people in town have permits to carry for self-defense or defense purposes, coyotes, stuff like that. Anytime I go in there personally, I have my firearm with me, and it's not legal to lock it in the car. So I'd like to see no, permitted, people with permits to have their firearm on their person. Because no firearms is a broad, I'd like to see, like, permit, like I have a permit to carry. Anybody who has a permit to carry can have their firearm on them when they're in these areas. There's no firearms is kind of, I can see open shot, maybe walking around with a shotgun or muzzle load a gun or something like that.
Right. Well, it's just put in there because of the fact that there's no hunting allowed.
No hunting, right. In those areas where there's no hunting, I can see, but that just to say a broad statement with no firearm would make me illegal to walk somewhere because, or not just me, anybody who has a permit to carry. So can we change that?
Doesn't say that.
Yeah?
This is an open space area, it's not all areas.
Right, but it's open, I mean, what do you do for a person that carries a firearm everywhere they go? They can't leave it in their car, it's illegal. Has to be on your person. Are you going somewhere, you're gonna go to an open space? With the permit to carry, I'm saying with a, with a state or town permit to carry, I can have your firearm on you. Not for hunting purposes or anything like that.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
To leave it in the car.
I, I had no comment on that, for or against.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how to change that, if, I mean, if it's all right, could I ask the chief of police there what the deal is with it?
Peter, do you have any idea?
That's, that's really just a policy consideration. You could just strike out the word firearms from that sentence. You could strike the sentence in Section 5431, subsection 6. You could add in a clause that say, "No firearms excepting for people with a concealed carry permit."
Right.
So there's certain ways you could deal with that.
The other stuff is okay, not, you don't want nobody metal detecting over graves and paintballs, shooting up trees and all that, but for a person just to have their off-duty weapon on them. I don't know what, how to go forward from this second on what's being said now, but...
I mean, I think it can be noted, I mean, ultimately, this is a request for a public hearing, so, you know, other people may have comments or thoughts about it, too, and at the end of whatever comes out of the public hearing, then some of this language may or may not be addressed.
Right. It's just asking to...
State law may allow the person to carry the gun there. The chief will know that. Chief, could you, could you answer that for me?
If it's on property.
If it's on town property, if somebody has a permit to carry and they're on this concealed, not out in front, would this make it a no?
Not necessarily. If they're permitted by the state and local police department, they'd be authorized to carry. It's also meeting all legal requirements, unless there's a policy...
That's that other.
...in the council or in another law, that would remove that.
Okay.
So probably we'll discuss it more at the public hearing. The only, anybody else actually?
Well, what I find difficult is, I've been going back and forth from the ordinance to this to try and identify what's different. And so I really prefer like a...
Mark-up copy.
A mark-up copy rather than this, because in the original, it says something about a sandford posse, yet unnamed open space.
Yeah, that is now in Picassett Ridge. That was, that was the only property we had at that time, and it wasn't even open yet. So now we have Picassett Ridge, so that's included in there.
And not being familiar with, so much with Fogland Beach, I know like on one side is the beach, but on the other side, you have the windsurfers. Is that the side that would be non-recreational now?
The original, the original plan was to conserve the salt marsh area and the vegetated dune area. And that's, that actually was surveyed, and the survey is recorded and is referenced in the plan. It's really, it's really pretty simple. It's the salt marsh area that's in the, the armpit of the arm going out on the north side, and it's, it's salt marsh grasses and so on and vegetation. There's really not that much to do back there, 'cause it's wet, it's a wetland. But it could be damaged if people started creeping back there and tear things up. There used to be a problem with dune buggies going down there and running through it. And then the sand dunes, those need to be preserved and vegetated just, just for storm surge problems when there's high winds and hurricanes and so on. So basically, they can do everything on the north side down on the beach that they can do on the, on the south side. That's what we tried to say in the ordinance.
All right. So... So just, as you mentioned, there's a survey plan that, is that this, or is this something else?
No, that, no, that's, that's a survey plan of just Fogland Beach.
Okay.
Yeah.
So taking out the Conservation Commission, were the Conservation Commission responsible for the vegetative areas and dunes?
Well, they were originally on the, that three-part committee, and they sort of led that, that group. That was their only responsibility in this ordinance. So since, if this ordinance is passed, that the Open Space Commission will assume management responsibility for that area, then they have no other reason to be included in the ordinance. So that's the only reason why they were...
So those responsibilities go over to Open Space?
Exactly. I mean, it makes sense, 'cause that's what Open Space does.
And then you have 54-31, no person is permitted in areas when closed except by special permit. You took out the special permit?
Well, the rule is that if it's closed, there's no reason to be in there, yeah. And so, I mean, if someone came to the council and got a special permit, I mean, it seemed to be obvious, so it just didn't seem to be, it didn't seem to be necessary to say that. I mean, it suggests that there's some special permit process, and there's not any special permit process. So I just didn't think it was worth putting in there. Well, really, the idea is that it should be closed at night.
Okay, but in, this is under, it applies to also town recreation?
Right.
And we basically do have, if there are activities during a time where the recreational area is closed, then they have to go to the recreation to basically get the permission that, the rec. commission to use the facilities. So I see your point with the special permit, so maybe it's accepted in special permission cases or something.
Yeah, that may be one that, when we have the public hearing, we sort out.
That was the same one I was going to mention.
We're not, we're not trying to restrict any possibility of having a special permit. That's, that wasn't our intent at all, so you just, in fact, it wouldn't be any big deal, we're putting it back in there if you think it's important to include that.
No, it's just that, it's, in fifty-four dash thirty-one, you do have allowed, except by special permit, but this one you took that out, so I'm just confused.
The only one that I have a real question about is, is about Fogland and the abutment. And I say that because I think that when it's all done, sorry, Grinnell's in the abutment, I apologize, Grinnell's in the abutment, when it's all done, there will be lighting on the abutment, there will be lighting at the beach, there is security lighting down there, and I think, you know, so as not to run amok of this, it might be worthwhile to have a discussion about how late that's going to be open, how long do we let people go down there? The lights may stay on after it's closed because the police feel that there's better security and less chance of vandalism. So, it's the only thing in here that I see that really, at the end of the day, there might be a significant conflict. I'm not sure exactly how to work it out, but...
Does your board research that with recreation and come up with some new wording, anticipating lighting? Is that going to be all night long, or?
I don't, I think at this point, at some point, I think there's probably needs to be a discussion that is between, that includes the Recreation Commission, the police, fire, town administrator, and even the council, as to exactly how we envision this, what I think is going to be a pretty cool new place, and how we're going to use it, and how we're going to let people use it, and what time people get to hang out down there until, and all that. It's the only thing that's... We may have to have language that gives the town the ability to be a little flexible based on how we decide that space is going to be used.
Do you think the abutment committee could draft something?
I, I don't think, I don't think that anyone, I don't, I think this is probably going to be such a departure for the town in terms of its scope and how it might be used. I'm not sure that any one committee could probably do it. I, I think it's, and I also do think that, you know, police and public safety, fire are going to have to weigh in, the administrator's going to have to weigh in, we're probably going to have to talk to the trust about the insurance on things. I'm not sure that there's going to be an answer in terms of scheduling a public hearing. It may just be that the language in here needs to reflect some level of flexibility for that space until we decide how it's going to...
I think, I think it was to draft something for the public hearing, not to just go there with an open door, and so we have something to work on, and someone should do that.
Which then brings the next question. This is a request to schedule a public hearing, so then the question is, should we, should we try and sort out a plan for the abutment in Grinnell's before we schedule this public hearing? Which, or do we want to schedule a public hearing and be a little flexible in the language for this? Thoughts here, the town administrator?
I'm just wondering if you could simply add a clause, unless an exception is approved by the town council? That gives you, you know, the flexibility to make a change where necessary, which I think you would do based on, I mean, you're not going to want lighting after ten o'clock in the middle of a forest or a beach area necessarily, unless it's, it's an area like this one here. And maybe there could be some criteria, but just adding that clause that the council could make an exception.
Okay.
Or you could limit that to just Grinnell Beach, I don't know.
Well, in that case...
I want to add, I should have done this upfront, this draft has gone through Conservation and Recreation Commission, and they've all endorsed it as a matter of record. So, I'd also told them that this was happening tonight, so I heard no objections to, or late last-minute changes.
Just on this last issue, I do think that in some locations, there's a concern with what happens at night, and there's some experience with vandalism. There are also lighting schemes that don't have to create light pollution, and I think the Beach Committee has worked on that. So, I do think it needs to, you know, be given a little more thought, and I'm sure we can come up with a solution.
So, I think the questions in front of us right now are, you go ahead and schedule the public hearing, knowing that we might need to put some, adjust some of the language in here to be flexible around that space, or if, if Open Space would prefer, we can try and sort out a plan for that space before we go forward.
If I might suggest a possibility, we could schedule a public hearing, and we don't have to have the final language at a public hearing, that's a hearing to get all the ideas for changes, and then, and then you can approve the ordinance subject to wording for, fill in the blank.
In that case, Madam Clerk?
Well, you have to have pretty much the language for this. I mean, people have to know what it is, basically, so they'll know whether or not they're in agreement, but you can't just make it all up that night.
No, I understand that. This is one, this is one small division of the ordinance.
What is the plan before, say, ten years ago, before the bridge got really bad? People would fish there, they would, I don't know what's going to be allowed down there anymore. Who's going to, who determines? Who's going to determine that?
Well, first of all, fishing's allowed basically twenty-four seven, so that's allowed. But, that's the point, is that this is a different kind of recreation space than we've ever had before, and it's going to have much more in the way of lighting opportunity, but it's also, you know, we've got to protect it from vandalism, so, you know, are we going to say that if the lights are on on the abutment because the chief says, listen, I think you should leave those lights on until two in the morning because I want, when my guys drive by, I want to see that? Well, does that mean to folks, well, hey, the lights are on on the abutment, I can't go out there? I mean, I think we need to think of reasonably what the lighting plan is for security, and what reasonable hours that, you know, people can go there. I mean, this says, for example, recreation areas are generally closed at sunset. Well, you know, the shade cell structure is going to be uplift at night. Can I see people who maybe have, you know, a dinner, or maybe go to the Red Dory and then want to go over and sit for a little while and look at the stars? Well, it's after sunset. So, I, I think it's a unique space, and it may not fit in with the rest of the rules like a park, or a playground, or something that, you know, stands by itself, and really, why is anybody there after dark? But, I think we need to do it.
Could I make a suggestion, Madam Chair? You could put this on for public hearing, advertise it. When you have the hearing that night, if you want to just make a minor change, you could do it at the hearing, discuss it at the hearing, and vote on it. If you want to take a more comprehensive approach specifically for the abutment area, you could still pass this ordinance, but come back with another ordinance, advertise that, and do it as a separate ordinance that's added on to this specifically addressed to the abutment.
I think the solicitor has the solution.
Now, now, that's, we have two projects there, we have the abutment, and we have the beach. So, we're going to have to have, because aren't we tied in with the state a little bit for them paying for the beaches? Don't they have some say on when that opens and closes for fishing?
They have some say on charging for parking, that's it.
That's it?
Other than that.
So, they don't have a say to say what time we close it to fishermen?
Just, they have a say on what we charge for parking. Not any hours that we are charged for parking.
And if I'm not mistaken, we can close the gate to the beach, but you can't stop them from going fishing because they can walk down and fish.
They just can't hog.
They just can't go in there and park, correct.
And who determines, we determine that?
We determine what time the gate is closed. With input from the...
The town, or the, and the president of the town who pay the bills.
Yes, exactly. So, I think...
But you could get, you could get a couple of recommendations from fire and police chief, right, to put it in, so it doesn't, so it's not like, it doesn't sound like a huge amount. It's not going to take a long time to get it from, you know, we get this, we get this public hearing going, and you can just, couldn't you just ask them, what's their recommendation?
Well, I think, I think the people who've been working on this all the time would have a primary role in suggesting what should work down there.
Right, but I'm sure the police chief and the fire chief...
Actually, Brian James is part of that commission, he and I could probably work up something.
Do you?
Maybe we should go forward with letting Madam Clerk schedule the council's public hearing, knowing that there are some things that will be up for discussion, some particular items that need to be clarified, Councilor Shabbard mentioned some.
Do you foresee Grinnell's opening this season? Or do you think it's going to be, you think it's going to be after Labor Day? I would say, right, so...
You know, we're waiting on contractors.
To be determined.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's something that we have to...
It's like the expression goes, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, otherwise we'd have hired their contractor. But, but I am hopeful, I'm cautiously optimistic, although at this point, Grinnell's and the abutment are tied together in that the contractors are dependent on each other from both sides, so when one side stops...
Well, I'm only, I'm only saying that because then Madam Clerk could look and see what the schedule looks like for an open meeting, rather than trying to cram it in right now.
Right.
If, you know...
I, I think we'll leave it up to Madam Clerk to go ahead and schedule the public hearing.
I mean, this thing's been laying around for three years, so, another couple months is...
Right, right.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm thinking October.
October.
I'm thinking October ninth.
October ninth.
I'm away that week.
Madam President, you really need a red line copy of the changes, as well as it was not included in my packet where Section fifty-one was not included, so I'm not sure what's being deleted.
I would agree with Councilor Shabbard, I would really like, it would be a lot easier for us to have a red line copy if this one exists.
It depends on what you're asking for. I can give you a red line copy.
That would be really helpful.
It will not be a track changes, because that is unreadable. I've already tried it.
It's okay, but at least a red line copy...
I understand.
Madam Clerk? Yes, we're not going back and forth.
I have a jack to the nine, I want to be here.
That's fine, so we'll pick another day.
I'm going for that week, I'm going to be in the...
No, listen, because there's only one other meeting after that before the election.
I won't be here, no.
Should I get this in before?
I'm gone for ten days.
When, are you gone in September?
No, October ninth to the eighteenth.
Oh, okay, well, we have two out, then, how about September twenty-four?
I'm not leaving till October, so...
That's fine.
Would you rather have it on September twenty-fourth?
Sure.
That works for me. I don't know about anybody else, I just...
Yep, it works for me.
Because if I advertise this, what I'm going to have to use is this version of the red line. And this isn't actually against the ordinance, the present ordinance.
That shows all the...
Shows changes, but it's not tracked to the current code.
Right, yeah. I can, I can get you something very quickly, probably tomorrow.
Okay, that's going to be September twenty-fourth.
Good, thank you. September twenty.
Yep.
Oh, I guess...
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Next will be Chief Jones' request to implement a research policy for Reserve Officer Corps, ROC, CSL program.
So, the presentation that you have in front of you is actually in two parts. The implementation portion of it is the policy and the memorandum that I submitted to the town administrator to implement the retired or reserve officer corps, to address that one first. That would only pertain to police officers in the state of Rhode Island who have attended the Rhode Island Municipal Police Academy, or their equivalent, or have retired from the Tiverton Police Department, and upon their retirement would be considered reserve police officers. As a reserve police officer, they would enjoy, continue to enjoy all the same duties and responsibilities of a law enforcement officer in Rhode Island, and we would just use them specifically for details. The second portion of it is the research portion of it for the CSL or the Community Safety Officer Program. That program, what I envision, and what I would ask the council to implement, would be having young men and women who are interested in law enforcement, criminal justice students possibly from local universities, local men and women who live in town, who could assist the town in a traffic-only or community service-only capacity, no firearms, no arrest powers, and could assist us with traffic details and roadwork. In the memorandum that I've given to you also, I've checked this with the trust, there'd be certain requirements that the, both the reserve officers and the community safety officers would have to go through, and on both instances, there is no financial impact to the town. Arguably, if any one of these individuals, the reserve or the community safety officer worked a road job, they would be paid for by the vendor, and the town would still impose its administrative fee.
May I, just want to add one thing, the officers, this three-year separation, do you want to explain that?
So, how it's worked out with the trust, if Officer Jones were to retire today, I can be eligible to be a reserve police officer for three years from the date of retirement. Because after that, what the trust looks at is, law enforcement is a kind of a fluid business, it changes, laws change, policies change, and once you pass that three-year mark, liability exponentially increases. So, as long as there's no separation of service, so Officer Jones could become a reserve the day of retirement and serve for another ten years, as long as there's no significant separation. He can't do three years in a day, so it'd have to be all but immediate. So, if I were to retire today and ask the police chief that I wanted to be a reserve officer, he or she would appoint me, and I would have to maintain the same certifications that we have per policy for a Tiverton police officer, and they'd have the same duties and responsibilities.
The second comment is, I had added a note to the requests to be put on the agenda based on the discussion I had a little while ago with the chief, thinking that there was no need to immediately jump to implementation, and that this could be considered in the budget process. It turns out, this is actually directly relevant to how the police department can fill its details at the casino, and so there is actually a reason to go a little bit faster. What the chief has done, I think, very well, first of all, is thinking ahead, and secondly, developing a draft contract that would be signed by each individual person that would join this reserve corps, and that is being reviewed by the solicitor, and the solicitor can tell you what they think about that. So, there is a document that clearly has people agreeing that they're non-union, non-permanent employees, that they don't have the benefits, things like that, and that's an important thing for you to know.
So, we did review that document, it looks like a very reasonable contract to us. The only caveat we put in there is that you want to have an opportunity to run it by the trust and get trust input on it, so...
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
The CSL, is that in lieu of, that's only, you use them only if uniform officers refuse the...
That's correct.
Right, so they're not, so that way, there's no contract?
That is correct.
Okay.
There's no what?
There's no, that way, the, an officer would say, oh, that CSL took my overtime.
Oh.
I wanted that post, so, there'd be the last call.
It's only if everyone refuses.
They can't fill the post. They may say that in here, it's, I can't...
And I've had discussions with the union about this, so they would enjoy their seniority also as full-time permanent members of the police department, but what I envision happening as well is, given the casino details, having an officer there twenty-four hours a day, and then having roadwork like we've had in other parts of town, that could go unfilled, which is still a safety issue for the town. If I can fill that with a CSL who's been trained, who has the traffic details, we don't need a, we need the police officer where the... need a, we need the police officer where the police officer's going to be used the most, and that's going to be at the casino, where there's the likelihood of possible arrest situations and arrest or no arrest decisions. The traffic detail can be filled with that CSL at a reduced rate and still be covered, and also it's a, it's a good opportunity for young men and women who are interested in law enforcement.
Councilor Shabbat.
We, we have talked about this concept before in discussions about the casino, so I, I think we are supportive of this, this approach. I think we've, we've discussed it enough before. So I think the town solicitor is correct. We probably need the contract reviewed by the trust, and that would be great. Does this have any impact on accreditation, your accreditation process right now?
None right, so, right now. Actually, this policy, that is the draft policy from the Reserve Officer Program, when I spoke with the representative for police and claim liability, he directed me to Newport. So this policy and the contract is from Newport, so which they are seeking accreditation, so it's a policy that is right from accreditation, so it meets all their conditions and standards, so we're a little bit ahead of the game with that. And I know with the trust, they're the ones who pointed me to the policy, so I know to address the solicitors', solicitors' concerns, they, they said Newport has the best policy for reserve officers and CSOs in our state.
Excellent, excellent.
I do, I have just a couple of questions, and obviously, these are folks who are making, who are working details, and the town is making money on details, but I do have a question in terms of our responsibility. They get paid a salary. If they're injured, I'm assuming they're covered by workman's compensation?
That's correct.
But in terms of their uniforms, staying up to date on their firearms qualifications, those kinds of things, we provide them uniforms, uh, uniforms stipend?
Um, we would not pay for any uniforms.
No.
So the only thing that we would provide them, so as a reserve officer, especially retired ones, I'm assuming that they would have the uniform, so there's that. The only thing that we would give them are badges of office, because we'd have to swear them in as reserves, and the firearm which would be on loan during the detail that they would have to return after the detail. Everything else they'd be responsible for. And then any training, they would be responsible, which we'd have to pay them for the training as a requirement of the job, but it wouldn't be the four hours of overtime like the union enjoys. It would be a straight time rate that they would come in, and if they did not, because they are at will, at the pleasure of the town and the police chief, non-permanent employees, if we had an officer who was not attending training or did not, or failed to certify, he'd be dismissed.
Excellent. And then, my second question is about the CSOs, and in full disclosure, I did run into the chief in the parking lot today and asked him, because I have an interest in this particularly. So, and I'm interested in the CSOs actually being able to do a little more than traffic details, and specifically, potentially, being able to maybe write parking tickets, or hand out a littering fine, or to be a presence in some of the places where we've had some issues with vandalism or people misbehaving. I don't know how the chief really feels about that. I don't know how the town administrator feels or the rest of the council, but I, I do think, you know, we can go forward with this, but I'd actually like to see that program to be expanded, to be a little bit more like a few other communities who actually have their CSOs able to do a little bit more than just details.
Yeah. Well, we have to look into that with the labor council as well, just to make sure we don't catch any grievances or anything like that.
Right, and I think with the, and I know, like we spoke about today, you have your animal control officer who under state law has the ability to issue dog fines. So, and I know many cities and towns, especially summer communities like we are, have either contract services out, or they have a force of parking people that just go out during the times of the year to enforce parking regulations. So, and Newport being one of them, I'm sure that they have a policy that addresses this issue along the same lines of the CSL. And knowing that if we're not taking any work away from the police, with the permanent police officers, if anything, we're working with the current full-time police force, and having an issue that we can address, parking down the beach, we can address, someone has their dog on a leash, and just have a better presence, and also hopefully have these young men and women who would eventually be, become part of our police department.
So, it's said that this part is the research part, and it's not happening in the very near future, and because there will be some cost, even though it also offers a lot of cost efficiency, I, I would say that it has to come up in the budget process.
Agreed. In that case, I'm not sure whether or not the chief needs a vote tonight, or does council consensus to go forward with this? If, Peter, it's not listed as a vote, what?
No, I, I think this is really just put before the council to give you some information about what we're, what the administrator and the chief were, were working on, so, you know, yes, I'm going to add that.
Just looking for a block. Yes, and, and I'm going to take the blame for this, as I said already earlier. My understanding was that this was not needed right away. It turns out it may be needed in two weeks, when we start doing details at the casino. So that puts us in a difficult situation, because you haven't seen the draft policy or the contract. We ought to get that out to you. I would recommend that you authorize the chief to go forward with implementing this, or getting this ready for immediate implementation. I believe the next meeting is on the 28th, and so you can ratify the contracts and the policy at that time, and I think we should be able to pull it off in time.
So what my plan would be is to have, is one officer from Bristol who's retired, who exclusively works road jobs for us right now. He has, does not have the three years of separation. I have his resume and the letter of recommendation from his chief. What I would do next meeting is make a presentation through the town administrator that you appoint him as a reserve officer. I also have a reserve, retired sergeant, Sergeant Cabral, who is interested in becoming a reserve, make a presentation to you with his resume and my recommendation along with the town administrators. So this way, from there, they would go and see the clerk, so they could get sworn in as reserve officers, and we could use them under this program.
How about the CSOs? Do you have guys lined up?
Not yet, because what I'd like to do is, we've implemented our explorer post at the high school, so that's kicking off when the students go back to school, and I'm hopeful that we'll have some high school-age students that are moving into, whether Roger Williams, CCRI, New England Tech, Salve, that are interested in criminal justice programs that we could start home, I prefer to start homegrown, before we start getting criminal justice students that want to come into town. I'd like to start with Tiverton youths that are going to schools locally and utilize them. So I'm hopeful that by next spring, when the roadwork starts up again for next season, and also we're on the cusp of that graduating class moving into college, that will have a pool of good men and women who have been part of our explorer post, who we vetted, who we know are of good character and are local, that would like to kick the program off then.
And they must be 21?
Uh, 18.
Oh, 18?
Because they are-
On no firearm?
Correct, sir.
In that case, I think the chief has the consensus and-
I'll make that a motion to give the chief the consensus to go ahead and pursue this.
A second, that's fine.
And then we'll see it in more, or we'll have more information on the agenda at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Ideally, okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Go down, chief.
Tab administrator, approve appointment of William McGrady as building official.
Thank you, and Mr. McGrady is here. Maybe he can come to the table. As you know, and I summarized it in my request to be put on the agenda, the process, we, we went through the interviews with the personnel board, and a second interview in my office. They went exceptionally well. I believe that we have a great candidate here. We have, however, run into a little complication with the certification. The end of my blurb in the request for the agenda said that it should be, or it would be no problem, and I don't think it's going to be a huge problem, but it wasn't quite as easy as I had been told it would be by someone who's in the business. The Rhode Island Building Commissioner was not quite as encouraging about how easy it would be to go from the Massachusetts certification to the Rhode Island certification. Now, there are some differences in what is required by the two states, and the building commission here is pretty intent on making sure that its requirements are being met. Also, Mr. McGrady was provisional building commissioner in Swansea, and still had a couple or one course or tests left to do, so that needs to be done in order to be ready for the Rhode Island certification as well. I spoke most recently with the building, the Rhode Island Building Commissioner. He ended up saying that the outstanding tests could be taken online as soon as Mr. McGrady is willing to do so, and then when he passes them, he can arrange for an interview with the commission, and, and then get the go-ahead to serve and act as an actual building official rather than just a building inspector. Since then, I think Mr. McGrady has looked into what his options are, and is actually ready to make arrangements to take the tests at a test site. There are some downsides to doing it online. If you lose the connection, you lose everything that you've done up to that point, and he believes you can do that as soon as next, next week?
Yes, sir.
Next week. So with that, I, I imagine you can, you know, ask some questions that you may have for Mr. McGrady now, and then you have the option of either bringing this back at the next council meeting, or approving the appointment subject to the certification being obtained, and the start date being after that certification is obtained.
Can you just say, so is it next, next Thursday? Is that what you?
I'm sorry.
What we, when do you think you're going to take, get the certification?
The tests are readily available, so you can go on and pick a date at any, you know, particular time. I'm very familiar with the testing, because the, it's a very similar process in Massachusetts.
Okay.
But it's, used to be reciprocal from Massachusetts to Rhode Island. It's no longer so. So you have to make sure that you're fully certified in both states. That was, I was unaware of that coming in. We thought that we had a six-month window, so to speak, to get the certification taken care of.
So what's, what's the timeframe then, now?
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful to, I don't like to take them both in the same, I, there's a series of six exams.
Okay.
Okay, I have four that are, are complete.
So you don't have to do those again?
I do not.
Okay.
The, the crossover comes with Rhode Island and Mass, there's a, there's a couple that are buried. So I'm going to take the first one that is required as soon as Monday, and then I was possibly going to take the next with the following one.
And do you know right away if you passed or not?
You do.
Okay.
You get your results.
And do, do, if you, if you don't pass, do you have a chance to take it, retake it, or you have to have a certain amount of time in between?
No, you can, you can-
You can do it right away?
Yes, you may.
Okay. And then after that, and then, let's just say everything goes fine, you get two tests passed, then what's the process to get you all certified?
The process in Rhode Island is that I have to sit down with the commissioner in Rhode Island and just be interviewed by him.
Okay, and it, and just, I'm just trying to figure out time-wise, I hope, so how long does that take?
Um-
I'm not talking about the interview itself. It's like, I'm talking about, is it like, three weeks before they get, you get in there to see him or her?
Well, I believe that, um, the town administrator had spoken to him and said that he could possibly make a special arrangement with us to get my interview done as soon as the testing was complete.
Okay. So they're going to try to move it? Okay, okay.
But again, my recommendation is to either approve, you know, subject to certification and, actually, that's probably my recommendation, just approve it subject to the certification and the start date not being until after the certification has been obtained. That's probably the cleanest way to do it.
So moved, what he said.
Now you're stealing my wine.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I do.
You want a second now?
When I found out that you were going to be, which is only a few days ago, I know there was some talk going around, this, this-
Sorry, Ken, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, well, when I found out, can I, if I call you Bill or William?
No, that's fine.
Bill, all right? The last bill worked out real good.
[laughing]
There's, there was some baggage that came along with you that's online, and I did some research, okay? So I went and I called everybody. You come highly recommended from just about everybody I talked to, even though your baggage is behind you. So I just say, welcome to Tiverton, and whatever's happened anywhere else, leave there, and everybody deserves a shot. But I did do extensive research, and I checked with a whole bunch of people because of what I found, so, and they all, you came highly recommended even from officials from other spots, so, welcome to Tiverton if everybody else feels the same way as me.
Thank you, sir.
So, I, I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do you know a lot about Tiverton? Do you know much about Tiverton?
I've been born and raised in, in the town, 58 years old.
There you go. So you, so you know that this is, this isn't an easy place to be the building official?
Um, you know, it's really not an easy place anywhere to be a building official.
That's true.
Having said that, and I, we, the town administrator and I conversed at length about this, is that for me, from a enforcement standpoint, consistency is key. So if I tell one person that they are required to do something, I expect that everybody else should have to do the same, follow the same process, play by the same rules. And that plays into what you had said, Councilor LeBeau, because I'm not going to go down that road.
There's no need.
Yeah, okay, okay.
No need.
Suffice to say that it's a, it's a tough position, and not everybody's happy at the end of the day all the time if you're doing your job the right way.
Absolutely.
Well, as long as you know what you're getting into, I think that would be wonderful. I do also agree with Counselor Shabbat that I think that we should appoint subject to having your certification, because we will need to keep Felix on and continue to pay him until we have that, right? So if that's okay with you, I think that that's the way I'd go. If that's the case, then someone wants to make a motion?
Already done.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I already have something.
Sorry.
The sign is on.
In that case-
Well, so you know, Counselor Edwards is not here tonight, and he feels the same way I do, and he wanted that mentioned.
Okay, so noted.
So noted.
In that case, we have a motion in a second to, let me just get the wording here, to make sure that we've got this right. Are we approving the contract or doing the ratification first, Peter?
So ratification will be first, and the contract when you approve it would just be, you know, same condition, not to be entered until he gets his certifications.
Okay. So are we doing the contract separately as a vote?
Yeah, I think, in case anybody has a comment on the language.
In that case, so, first motion is to approve the appointment of William McGrady as building official pending-
Certification.
Pending certification as a Rhode Island state building official. Motion is second, all in favor? Okay, onto the contract. Are there any questions on the contract? Or discussion?
I'm bringing up my, my shtick with the car again. I would like the people of Tiverton to know that they own the cars, and I would like that, that painted thing to be not this little thing like this, because we have had in the past people thinking it's their own private vehicle. So if he's getting a car, which is fine with me, do we have one with an appropriate size so people can see it, so they don't need to go up with a magnifying glass and say who is this person? And it sounds silly, except FUC abuse, and then it's not so silly. So I'm, each time I, I will do this for every single car as it's coming along, to get those, to get those big, so everybody in town knows that it belongs to the town.
It'd be marked appropriately.
And be marked appropriately, and, and, and big enough so you can see it.
And when we see the building inspector come, we can lock the door so he can't get at it.
Yeah. I mean, I, it's just, it's just the past, you know, I don't want to keep going down that same path where people, you know, where there has been abuse. I want to get it straightened out.
I've had problems in my tenure in Fall River. I was there for over 10 years. We used to use our own vehicles, and we were paid a stipend to do so, and it did create problems, as you can imagine, pulling up on someone's property with Rhode Island plates, which I have, being a Massachusetts building official, so.
And my last question on the car is, this particular vehicle would be a car to be used during working hours, not a commuting vehicle, correct?
That's correct. Just one last thing, the contract obviously will have different dates for the start date.
In that case.
I make a motion to ratify a contract for building official, one-year contract with two one-year extensions, subject to certification. The contract would begin the day following certification.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Because I do have one discussion question, which is, unless I missed it, I don't actually have salary information in my package?
Yeah. Salary information, like the number four?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Sorry. I was looking for like the fiscal impact statement, but I'm assuming since the salaries, this, there is.
I think there was a fiscal impact statement.
I'm not finding one. No, the fiscal impact statement.
I think there's a third, oh, it may be as part of the, oh, wait a minute.
I think the net of it is, though, that the fiscal impact would be the same as our.
And it was posted.
And it was posted. In that case.
We made public two days ago.
If it, if it's not a change, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't changed from last night. Okay. In that case, in that case, I have a motion in a second unless there's further discussion. All in favor? Welcome aboard. Good luck with your exams. We look forward to your passing them and joining us.
Thank you.
Come to Sconna River office and get your T-shirt. Everybody gets a T-shirt.
Yeah, but you have to do that offline, after hours.
What's the matter with the free plug ones online?
Next, Town Clerk, approval to hire temporary employee for 25 hours per week until the end of November to cover personnel in the clerk's office during the election cycle and request to transfer $6,000 from the council contingency.
Yes, I'm going to have a, one of the clerks in the town clerk's office will be out for at least six to eight weeks with some medical issues, so right now that office is also cut back to three and a half personnel instead of the four. And I had discussed this at the time with the budget committee and the council that come election time, this is going to be hard to get through with just three and a half people. The state puts a lot more burden on the towns, and with, this happens to be my key personnel in that office, I'm going to have to try to replace her as well. I have been increasing the part-time hours through the election account because she is working just on elections. But this is going to be to actually cover a miss clerk that will be out, just for the length of time she's going to be out. I did come before the council and asked for permission to advertise. We did advertise, and the interviews are going to be Thursday, and I think there's pretty good candidates there.
I'll make a motion that we grant the clerk permission to get a part-time temporary employee.
Motion is there second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Can't have Jeannie work anymore than she already does.
I know. But does that include, I'm sorry, was, that also include the $6,000 from the council contingency?
I'll put that in my motion.
Second.
I have a motion second to transfer $6,000 from the council contingency fund to account 10105102 for personnel. All in favor?
I didn't have a little.
The next item is DPW Director Rogers requests approval to purchase a used 2008 Internet with 7,400 horsepower sander, combo body, and plow.
Good evening again.
You're welcome.
Currently, DPW has two 1993 and two 1994 plow trucks. Would like to replace one of them with this 2008. It has a stainless steel body with a front sander and a plow hook-up. It's got about 2,200 hours and about 22,000 miles. It's a good, in really good shape. Kim has looked at it a couple of times, the foreman, and the assistant, the new assistant mechanic, looked at it today, and they're both happy with it. New trucks like this go for 150,000 or more. This is coming in around 50,000. The stainless steel dump bodies and sanders, the front sanders, the rear sanders, they go for between 50 and 60,000 dollars new. So the 50,000 dollar price is a good price for what we're getting. So we would like to purchase it, and if there's any questions?
Questions? I have a question, but.
I do too, when you're done. Because I want to make sure that this is the truck, because I did some research on the truck before I knew this was, before we got our packet. So whether it's 22,000 miles on that truck, is that what they're saying?
Yeah, approximately 22,000, yes.
Okay, so for some strange reason, I pulled up the same one right there.
Yeah.
So you can see it in color, and so I did some and found out what's going on with the truck, and I looked up the price of a new truck, so.
So my first question is, as part of the budget this year, we budgeted for two new DPW trucks. This isn't one of those two trucks, right?
Correct.
This is a third truck that we're looking at because.
Can I explain more part of that? There's been a discussion for quite some time about the trucks that we have, to our extent, we have the capacity to do plowing. We still have what are referred to fondly as antiques that may not make it through the next winter. The availability of this truck was mentioned, I think in the presence of the treasurer who suggested that we do have an account that could be used to acquire this, if in fact it's such a good opportunity and could save us a significant amount of money. So that's why we're looking at it. It was not something that was planned for a long time. The opportunity came up, it was mentioned, the treasurer thought that there might be a way to do it, and let's bring it before the council.
So I know the condition of the vehicles down at the DPW garage. There's rumors around town that four of them are not going to pass inspection in November. Was that?
The four of them, four of them.
I know they are, they're absolutely junk. So after the research I did on this truck, I don't know where the money's coming from, I knew it wasn't budgeted, but deal-wise, it's, I'm not really the kind of guy who likes to buy used stuff, I say, go buy a new one, but this is really a great, if it's what's in the package there, it's really a good deal. It's one-third the price with a few miles on it, so if we got the money, I'm, I'm on board, because I know we got a bunch of crap parked in the garage down there.
So you want to make that a motion, Randy?
I do.
Good man.
But we got to find, I don't know where the money's coming from.
Denise is here.
Oh, you snuck up over there.
If you recall, fiscal year 17, we established the resolution to put 25% of the unexpended funds at the end of the year into a capital reserve account. So for fiscal year 17, which was a very tight year, we grows out $25,000. This year, estimating at least 90,000 will be added to that. So for fiscal year 19, we'll start with around $115,000 in the reserve account for capital.
So that said, we can pay for this truck cash?
Yes.
I can live with that.
Which was why, when Kim came to me with that, he said, I have this opportunity, how can we make this work? And that's really the only way we could make it work.
I'll second Randy's motion.
I do have one question. When you buy a truck like this, and forgive my not knowing this about buying a commercial truck, does it come with a warranty?
I will check on that.
In that case, the mechanic better check it really carefully. All right. Any other discussion?
With 22,000 miles, these, our trucks that we have now have like 240,000 miles, correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I believe, I looked there, so with, this, this truck's only got 10% of the use right now, so at one-third the price, so long as it's like Counselor Hilton said, you know, if it comes with a warranty, just, it's a little better. If one's available for a used one, and it's a couple of bucks, probably wouldn't be a bad idea either.
You mean to buy a warranty?
What's that?
You mean to buy a warranty?
Buy a warranty.
Yeah, it under, at least certain parts of it, the stuff that's really, really expensive to replace.
Engine drive change.
Well, this truck is going to be coming from the same place that the other two trucks coming from, correct? So.
So if it's available, or a 10-year-old truck, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to spend a couple of grand on a warranty for engine tranny and all the applicable stuff.
So do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend my motion for 50,000 for the vehicle and a warranty if it's available.
Do you want to, do you want to say how much?
Well, I mean, I don't know what warranties run on the vehicles. I know what they run on the car, I don't know what it would run on something like that.
So Director Rogers, do you know?
Well, no, I do not know what a warranty costs, but as Counselor mentioned, about a powertrain, block, et cetera, I do not know.
Well, since we're buying, since we're buying this from the place we're getting the other vehicles, if there is a warranty option, then I'm sure that they would be willing, if we wanted to take it, for us to vote on it at the next meeting, in other words. And then if it's a good deal, and it's a good warranty, and it's worth it, and the price is right, so.
Bring it up to the next meeting.
We could discuss it next meeting. And so in that case, I have a motion in a second. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. Are we buying this subject to getting the warranty?
We're not buying it subject to getting the warranty, but we're.
We're buying it, we're buying it and then see what the warranty would cost us and come back with a.
Well, we don't want to lose it.
Right.
So that's why.
So if we're purchasing it, but we're going to bring up the next council meeting, warranty issue.
If available.
See if the warranty's available, how much? For how long? Three years, five years, two years, whatever it is? To protect our investment.
Try and get one for free, though.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you 30 minutes.
County, we don't have any bids or requests for proposals. Town administrator announcements, update on employment vacancies.
And the update is directly relevant because we have two mechanics now in DPW. The part-time mechanic started today. The full-time will start tomorrow, and they'll take very good care of this truck. The only other announcement is, I'm only making because I need a sense from you who might be attending. One is the ribbon cutting on the 22nd next week at 11 o'clock in the morning of the roundabout. And then we have the casino opening, the soft opening starting on the 30th, the public opening on September 1st. But for the soft opening too, I need to know who will be representing the council. And I'm not sure if that has been arranged yet, because Town Council President indicated she might not be able to do it. I was going to talk to you, but if after the meeting, we could maybe figure out who's able to do this, that would be helpful.
What were the, what were the two dates?
The 22nd and the 30th. Do you know what time?
The 22nd is the, at 11 o'clock, and on the 30th is 10 o'clock in the morning.
I thought we already got, we already got the invitation for the 30th. Didn't you people?
This is also to, you may well have had.
Some of you may have already responded, because Kim Moore told me some of you responded direct.
I never got it, so.
I will not be in town.
Nobody uses my person.
And I don't know if you want to make any, it's not on agenda, so you can't really make any formal decision, but it's important that someone represent the council and offer a few remarks.
Well, have the, has the council president or the council vice president weighed in yet on their attendance?
I've discussed it a few times with Denise, who indicated that she has difficulty with the schedule and may not be able to do it. And I thought she, the last time we spoke, she was going to talk and figure out who else on the council, but I'm getting urgent requests from Rhode Island DOT and from Twin River because they need to get the program ready.
I would suggest that if anybody on the council is able to attend and willing to say a few words, that they might let Jan know sometime in the next 24 hours.
What words do we have to say?
Hey, nice job. Nice rotary. Looks great.
Looks great. We're happy about it. Okay. Any other announcements, Jim? Council announcements, Councilor DiMederos had one, she's not here, I'm suggesting that we table this until the following meeting?
Actually, she discussed this with me, and all it is, is the idea that we have always put out a booklet when we have multiple charter amendments, and before I venture in a lot of time that this could be, I just wanted to make sure that the council wanted. I have to put it in the newspaper, have to put something in the newspaper listing all the questions anyway, that's required. But we usually send these out, we used to do them through direct mail. Now the post office has something going, I thought I'd kind of check into it. What I'll do is try to get some prices and come back and let you know what it is. Problem with the post office is they will only mail to all residents and not just electors. So we'll have to see what it goes, it might, it's going to be lengthier this time. I've, I've always held it to, you know, the two-page like this fold over, so. But anyway, if the council wants it done, we will find a way to get it done, but it will be costly.
Can we put them in the bag with a rock?
You can, but I won't.
So, so do we have, we have budget for that?
No, there is no budget. You're going to have to pay for this. We're going to have to find a means to pay for this.
Do you have a ballpark of what it might cost?
It's going to cost a few thousand dollars. I think the last one cost me about $3,000. So that's why I'm saying it's a lot of work and planning if we're not going to, if we don't want to do this.
I think we need a, I think we need a cost on it at this point, if we don't have a budget for it.
Well, I think, I mean, we do have money in the contingency fund. I mean, personally, I think it's important to.
Yeah, I agree with that.
For people to understand what the charter changes really mean, and so, but I do think we need a cost. If it's $14,000, you know, I don't think it will be.
It's not going to be 14, but it could very well be three, thirty, between 3,000 and 4,000.
Don't you think?
Because you've got to mail it out.
How about the newspaper? Well, not everybody gets the newspaper.
You could put it as an insert, but still, there's no guarantee.
The only way you have a guarantee to get it to the household is to do direct mail to the household, so.
I think.
I'll try to work on some.
Should go for preparing.
Yeah.
Any other town council announcements? Town solicitor announcements? Town clerk items announced? We have no close to.